Okay, so it's unmuted and all that jazz. Okay, people on TV are probably listening or on Facebook. Um, alright, so we'll get started. We'll call this joint, um, meeting to order and we'll start off. Let's leave it.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll kick it off. We, I know we met, I don't know, six weeks ago. Kind of started off and kind of led us to do the survey. Um, we're going to talk about the results today and where we go from there. So I think that was good. I think as we talked about moving forward, we keep it a nice, open and collaborative, um, meeting. Um, if there's any concerns or anything that folks don't feel comfortable sharing, I think sharing with, with myself, we'll be happy to, to take those forward to our respective sides and whatnot. If there's discussion or whatnot, but I think, um, some good stuff has come out of that. I think people have taken the one strong community that the town initially kind of kicked out there and the chambers using that. I think the schools use that at times. So I think, um, that's good progress. And I give this a kind of a nice, um, you know, kind of trampoline if you will, to kind of leap off of it and move forward.
I agree. I agree, and, uh, thank you guys for hosting it again. We promised to have you over in our house soon. And, uh, we're just looking forward and more thankful for, you know, being here again and that we get this opportunity to, to meet with you guys and try and, and make the community, um, stronger and better by working together.
A little bit of technical issues here for a moment. Today, today is great, great, great. So I don't know if you want to kick it off?
Um, I think, uh, when we were here for the first meeting, we just brainstormed ourselves collectively and came up with things that we felt, um, as boards that we do good. Um, some things that we felt we could possibly do better and then some things that we thought needed more attention than the others. And, um, then the survey was to poll the public and see if the public felt, and if their ideas and, and thoughts aligned with what we all shared together in that meeting. And I don't really think personally that there were a lot of surprises in the survey. I don't know how you guys felt, but I think it aligned with kind of what we were all thinking in the first meeting. So, um, I'll hand it over to you since.
Well, no, Amanda had talked about, I don't know if you want to talk about one.
Yeah, so I have just kind of outlined, I completely agree with you. Um, when the results came out, I thought, hey, we, okay, maybe we kind of know what we're talking about.
Got our finger on it.
Okay, this is good. This is good progress. Um, and so what I did was I took everything, um, that was kind of rated below two and a half, which two and a half was average. So this is everything that the, the public, the, from the survey believes that we do below average. Um, I've kind of put on there, the lowest one there was excels in trying to eliminate traffic. Um, some of the other lower ones in the ones kind of going down, I should have put them in order, but that would have been way too busy. Um, excels in events and conferences was low. Excels in entertainment activities for adults. Uh, excels in the arts and culture. Excels in transportation. Then the eliminate traffic one again. Um, excels in having a town center and then excels in providing shared office space. And one thing with this, where it just said, put any comment that you like. Um, one thing that we kind of noticed was the whole town center thing, which again, I don't think that's a surprise to any of us. I think that was something we had discussed last time, so it just kind of seems like a theme. Um, and then I kind of put over here on the right in green, these are the words that were coming up, um, the most frequently when people were asked, put down three words that make you think about Avon and our community, and these are the words. So I'm wondering, after we've had some discussion, if we maybe even want to take like a five minute and everybody just kind of go up and we each tally our three favorite without kind of bias from what other people think and before we have conversation, just to kind of narrow that down even further. Um, so I'm not sure where we want to go from here. I don't know if it's, let's take those things that are on the bottom. Um, we had discussed at our last board meeting and I, again, I told them as I was saying this, I was like, I'm making this up as I go along, um, because that's kind of what this is, right? We're shredding new territory here and kind of going through this together and figuring out what we want to do and how we can work better together. So is it coming up with a list of top five? You know, these are the top five things we think that we really need to hone in on and that doesn't have to be the bottom five, right? If there's some of those that we think we could combine together into one, um, if there's something that's a little higher and we all are like, we really want to focus on that, let's put that in our list of top five. And then where do we go from there? Do we split up into, to smaller groups leaving this meeting? Um, to, you know, each smaller group kind of focuses on their one area. I'm completely open to discussion, whatever you guys want to do. Um, what are your thoughts?
Well, then you can start with a few of these that we're kind of addressing right now that are pending, and that would be traffic, transportation and shared office space. Uh, last Thursday, we just passed, um, a development that was going to go in on 1050 East for the shared office space. And that looks like it's going to be a very nice facility. So I, I would say, just my interpretation would be we could put pending by those three.
Okay.
If, if we're starting at the bottom and moving up, and then that leaves us four out of the seven on, from the very bottom.
Yeah, I'm kind of all for going at the hard ones. Traffic's a hard one naturally, and, uh, it, it's good to speak to it because it's, it's a hot button, you know? People do focus on the negative and.
Yeah.
So I don't want to dance around that. Um, I think it's good and I don't like to dance around and say, hey, NDOT controls the signals, you know? Um, yeah, they do, but they've been very responsive at listening to us. Um, that's been good. Uh, we do have, uh, the improvements going on in the area, uh, you know, as far as, you know, they've had the bridge project that's coming up that's now just about done and then the widening, you know, from Shiloh to Raceway, um, right around that area. That's been a heartache for everyone. I mentioned our, at our meeting that, uh, the plan now is to get some, uh, some, get those road plates out and make it smoother going into winter. But I realize that's a, that's a pain in the rear for everyone. Uh, it, it's tough, uh, but, uh, we need to get through it. We need to do it. I've had people ask me, why do we have County Road 100 South between Dan Jones and Ronald Reagan going at the same time as, as US 36? And I don't like to joke with them and say, well, we just thought it'd be fun. You know, no, that's, what, what happened was, is it turned out that the utilities were, as they always are everywhere, uh, they were a problem 100 South. We had that issue going on where it was a problem. And so it had a little delayed start, uh, on that, which caused a problem there and county wanted to do the work on the, the bridge, you know, coming over too, and they couldn't do that. So you have to decide which projects do you put off, um, or do you plow ahead and do your best to try to work with it and do the maintenance of traffic? So it's, it's a right thing to take some hits on it because it wa, it has been a problem for our public and I, I admit that.
It was important too, to go on with 100 South even though we knew that Rockville Road would be happening, um, because we had the opportunity for some economic growth along 100, um, South with the, uh, with the Mormon, um, land there. Um, and I think everyone's going to be really surprised when they are able to open up that road and we've got an 880,000 square foot warehouse that's well underway, um, already on the road before it even opened. So economically, it was, it was a, a decision that, to move forward with it, even though it might cause a little bit of headache for a little bit of time.
We do have some, uh, Ryan knows too, and Steve Moore, the audience, know that we have, um, some roundabout things coming up, uh, that are going to be some nice traffic calming, it's going to be enjoyable, uh, I could see when it's done.
Yeah.
You know, during the construction, yes, we watch the maintenance of traffic and try not to be too much of a problem for people and look for alternatives that are reasonable for them for traveling. Uh, that's important and it's important that they can get there and feel comfortable with it, but, uh, we've had, I don't know what the dollar amount is, is how many, how many, how many dollars we've been spending lately on roadway. Ryan, do you happen to have that?
Well, over the last about 12 years, we've spent about almost 150 million between the county and the town and NDOT, a bunch of projects in Avon basically, so. Yeah, the traffic's always a tough one because you have to actually make it worse to make it better. And I know that's frustrating to people, but people kind of need to grit and bear it and help get through it. And we can't make it better without having to close roads and improve them and make them better. So, you know, it's just part of the process and people can be patient with us. We're working through it. We're spending lots of money. We're addressing those needs as quickly and efficiently as we can.
And we'll continue to go after grants and, and anything that we can and partner within that, they've been good with, to work with, you know, on this. So, so continuing to be those partners. Now, we have to, once those monies are out there, as you guys know, on the township level, you have to spend and you have to move forward with it. So once we're committed to it, we have to make it work and, and we have to do everything we can to make it not too punishing for the public, but we want to get it done. So that's, that's probably in a nutshell, but I'm open for any questions or if you need some depth on that or some, some highlights on that, that's fine. Just let me know what questions you might have on that.
Well, I was going to say, for the purposes of what this group is, right? And this collaboration, I, I don't know that that is something, traffic, that we can address together. I think that's kind of a town, right? You, you guys have it. You're, you're doing your best, you're working. I mean, do you guys agree with that, that that's maybe not something that goes on our top five?
The only thing I would add is it would, the idea behind collaboration, I agree, it's, they're over it, but I think if we have the information, we can also help you communicate it to the public.
Absolutely.
I've found that by, within the collaboration group that we have that meets every other month, that does work a lot because then we're sharing stuff and we're knowing what the other, you know, what each of us are doing. And when it comes up in the public, we say, no, that's not right. This is what's really going on. So I found that very helpful. That's the only thing I would add is that, you know, would, would help if we know so we can help you as far as communicating.
I just meant for the purposes of breaking into a small group and addressing an issue. I don't think that that's something that a small group is going to help in any way.
Well, the other thing too, that, to me, that's not a pending item. That's just going to be an ongoing, right?
That's right.
So I think as we address these, we should think of things that are going to be different to perpetuity.
Right.
And things that we can certainly, our pending may have an end date somewhere.
Right.
So, I mean, as, as we go through this, and I, I guess we need to understand what are our objectives as we go through this? What's the end game? This will be our second meeting. You know, as we do this, I look at this as, not only NDOT, three governmental bodies, county, the town and the township. And then you throw in NDOT, so you have four. And you have this four-headed animal that is, there could be four different directions that we're all going in and we're trying to make this, it's not going to be perfect, but maybe streamline it, make it a little bit more functional. And so as you look at this and you look at these items here, you know, like even we, we said the, the office space Aaron talked about, but even right above that is the incubator for the new businesses. Let's kind of go together hand in hand. That's what developers are bringing to the table and we've been fortunate to have that. So, um, you know, those are, that's what I see here is, is how do we make decent, like adult education, the town can't control, that's a school issue. That's a school or that could be an Ivy Tech or a tri and university issue. It's not the town that can do that.
Well, I kind of agree with what Don said, you know, it's, it's more of an educational process and I think we, you know, took the time to do the survey and, and, um, anyone online right now watching us, it's good for them to hear that, you know, that, that was one of the topics in the survey and it was one of them that they felt we could do better. And so we're responding to that. We heard them and, uh, we are working on it and, um, you know, it's good for that feedback at least, so that they know that we, we did notice, we did, we did see it, we hear them and we're working through it.
I'd like to mention that the school and the library were both invited to this meeting, but both of them have board meetings tonight, so that's why they're not here.
Is that a smoke alarm?
Those are crickets.
I, I was like, why does this sound like crickets? Well, I mean, as I kind of go down this list, I, I hear what you're saying, Greg, that adult education is maybe the school, it's maybe trying, it's maybe Ivy Tech, but could a group that consists of a member from the town, the township, the school, the library, different entities, could we be a stronger force to kind of go out and try to figure that out? What does that look like? Does, you know, is it also working with senior services? Does that mean just adults as in 30, 40-year-olds? Or does it also mean, you know, 60 plus? I, I'm not sure exactly what that means. Um, I also look at like excelling in sports facilities. That's something that we've all have known has been an issue for a very, very long time. Is that something that if we're all working together, can we try to figure out, are there solutions to this? What are the solutions? I think it's just about being community and collaborating and trying to find solutions to things that may not seem like there are a solution, but let's at least look at them from a couple of different angles. I don't know. I mean, I see the road thing as in, no, you, you guys really have, there's nothing that we're going to be able to say or do or help with or, the road issues are the road issues, just like you said, it's going to get worked before it gets better.
We have to respond to it though. It's, it's a real thing.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. But I don't see that a small group is going to do anything to make it, make it better or worse or different. Does that make sense? Whereas adult education, maybe that is something that we could look at from a couple of different angles and try to figure out, what does that look like within our community and why does the public think it's so bad? And can we pull in, you know, all kinds of different, can we pull in somebody from Ivy Tech and get their take on it? Can we pull in from, somebody from trying and get their take on it? Uh, a lot of the adult education left, right? China University closed, or made implacable. That's right, yeah. So I'm just trying to think about some of these from a different lens and, and what would it look like if different entities were taking a different look at it and how can we help and try to address some of these items?
If, if I mean on, on adult education specifically, I wish Laura was here. Um, we just, uh, gave, uh, $5,000 to the library specifically for a, um, adult education program and the, the name of the program escapes me, but that was, it's, its specific duty was to, uh, improve adult education through the library. Laura talked that program, uh, just as an amazing opportunity. We were glad to be able to help there. I, I think that touches back on, on some Don mentioned, just doing a better job of, of speaking to some of these things. Um, uh, I don't think we've done a good job of, uh, champion, championing that for the library, nor is the library, um, doing a good job of, of spreading that advertisement. So I think there are some things that have been done that are under the radar, might not be done as well, but this might be just one of those opportunities to a small group to, hey, maybe it is just education for the public, hey, these, there are opportunities here.
So then if we're going to look at the things that we feel like we could make a difference on or put in a breakout group, maybe that's the direction we should go for tonight's meeting. On our group, I don't know how much we want to say, but we are, um, we will have on our agenda a development that, um, will be coming before the town council and, uh, there's a great opportunity and we've had conversation about perhaps, um, that being the answer to a town center, if you will. It'll be a place where the community can gather for different events and things like that. Um, I don't know, Ryan, how much we really can say at this point.
Yeah, we can, and we can share some.
I mean, it's coming on the agenda, so.
Sure, yeah, it's coming up and I think I've, I've shared it with Don too, and hopefully Don has shared some of that with you guys, but we have been working with a developer called Easton Gray. Um, we're not really calling it a town center because it's not in the center of town, but it, it, it is the concept of a center or a place for people to gather that would be different than the rest of US 36. It would, it would have commercial fronting a road, um, it may have some multifamily that has to be there to support it. Uh, it would be more mom and pop type stores and, uh, restaurants that people can walk to and sit down and eat and, and there would also be a civic component, uh, that we've talked about being, um, a bigger government center, maybe not a town hall, but there would be a, a government center that would be available to township and the school and the library and the town and fire and police and that we'd all be in a, a singular location kind of together that's also in that area that's, that's, you know, the town center. We're calling it a Riverwalk district at this point. It's right, right next to Whitley Creek. Um, but we've been working with the developer for about 12 months and it's, it's been a really a, a great back and forth. So they are starting to go through that, our planning process now, if that zoning gets approved, um, then the next step would be they have asked the town to provide some financing to support the project and to create some TIP districts and things like that, um, which again is, is always, and, and we've taken the position that creating TIP districts is really, it's all of us. Everybody's providing something, so the township's providing something and the library's providing something. And I think that's the concept of the government center too, that if everyone's providing something, that everybody can get back something out of it as well, that is beneficial to all of us as government entities, but also to us as a community. I think the important part about it is there's really nowhere else that we've identified in town that we can accomplish a town center, which really makes this development really unique and special, because if we lose this opportunity, there may not be another one for us to try to accomplish that goal. So it is, this is going to be something as it goes through that we're going to, and I've shared this with Don, that we're going to look for the support from the township and the school. Um, and hopefully it can be viewed as something that's beneficial to the entire community. It's now maybe in the town of Avon, it may go through the town of Avon's process, but it's, it's still something that benefits all of us and it's the only opportunity maybe to get something like this for our community. And, and we have heard that and that's why we've really worked hard on this over the last few months. So we're, we're excited about it. We think it's something good and unique for the community.
It'll have green space, so farmer's market, picture that instead of being out on the asphalt pavement over in a parking lot, it'll be a place for vendors to come and, you know, maybe, um, Fourth of July things, or you can shut down components of, of the retail district and things like that. So it'll have, well, like you've seen in Fishers and Carmel, you know, you see the businesses on the lower level with some housing above it and, and again, it's going to be more of the mom and pop things, so not the chain restaurants that we already have. It's going to be a, a unique, um, product to the town. And it's as close as, like Ryan said, that I think that Avon will ever be able to get to, um, calling a town center because we have Rockville Road and it's already developed. So there's not another location to really put a town center per se.
There's a potential arts civic component of it that would make it very exciting.
Yes.
Something that we know, and we agonize over not having that, we really do. Uh, when you see us go through this budget process and we have to, in the past, we have to cut that out, that hurts each of us and we say, we can't keep doing this. And so now this could make it right.
So it addresses a few things.
Which I think, yeah, that was up there as well, the arts.
Well, just taking the Easton Gray as an example, you can plug in the town center, you can plug in arts and culture, you can plug in entertainment and adults, you can plug in events and conferences. So I mean, now you're start, starting to categorically put them in, in groups of, you know, I won't say the other thing about one other thing we're, we're trying to do, but, um, then you get other things like I think are for all items, transparency.
Yes.
Providing education on public issues, there's, that's not a one specific thing. It's really a lot of things that we're just trying to convey a message to people. So I think as we, we start to go through these things, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of categories, like, you know, agricultural needs, I'm not sure we have any agricultural needs. I mean, we're giving tax abatement, agricultural tax abatement were necessary to the existing farmers that are out there that want to be annexed into the town. But other than that, I mean, I, I look at that as farming the farmland and, and having implement dealerships and things like that. I don't think that's us very well.
Which I think to what you just said, that's exactly what we want, is to get these down to.
Manageable.
Three to five. And like, and I think that's what we talked about, we can kind of lump some of them together. I think one that's not up there that we're obviously trying to address already is securing the borders.
Yes.
So I think that's something that we could prob, I think this group would want to add that because we have formed smaller groups, a smaller group is already existing, um, to work on that and that's something that's very important, so.
We might need to clarify what that means for folks that are not here in this room.
Sure.
If we're not talking the edge of the United States. In Washington Township, we're looking at making sure that the corners of the Washington Township are, are, um, brought in and, and secured. And we've had very positive responses from the farming community you mentioned. Uh, they, they like to come in to the town, uh, in general because they know they have a better product for their, their land and it's going to be better for that. So it's kind of exciting really on, on doing that, but we have to go, if it's a voluntary annexation, fine. Um, no, we're not looking at takeover type things. So, so what we have to do is we have to just work with people and, and, you know, make that happen.
And collectively, um, you know, there's Robert and I on the annexation committee, Ryan is on the annexation committee, Amanda, Don and Inglehart.
And Jeff Bradley.
And Jeff Bradley from the library board. And, um, in fact, we meet tomorrow. But what we've talked about securing our borders, what we mean by that for the public is that, um, to control the growth that affects our schools, um, you know, Plainfield, I'm just going to say it right, Plainfield has encroached within the borders of Washington Township, the county sometimes does as well, and they might, um, start a housing subdivision that might have 300, 400 homes. And, um, so it's affecting our schools, but yet we're not getting the tax dollars for that. And, um, you know, our schools may or may not be ready for that additional influx of students, um, at the time. And so by securing our borders and annexing in those perimeter properties, um, we are able then to, to have like a timeline or control better the development that exists within our, our boundaries.
What it does is it keeps Danville and Brownsburg out of Washington Township.
Yes.
It secures the border. So what we're talking about is strips, we're not talking about large developments, we're talking about the strips that, that lie along that, that, that become contiguous and move across and move down. It also protects the fire territory because our tack, fire tack, territory tax, um, right now, if you were to look at our, our, where our tax levies are laid out, we have a township tax levy, which is the entire township, and we have a fire territory levy, which is everything but the Plainfield portion, because Plainfield Fire provides fire protection for that area, even though we probably do more runs there than they do, uh, only because of our closeness. Uh, but we don't get the tax dollars for that. And when we, when we plan our operating budgets and we plan our, like our, our fire bond for fire station bond, that's based on what we have right now. And when we lose that, then we lose those tax dollars. And so that's why it's important to the township that we, that we help you secure that. The school and the library look at from the standpoint, because if you look at the example that Plainfield did, when they did their TIP allocations, they did not include Avon Schools or Avon Washington Township Library in there, even though they did give Plainfield Schools and Plainfield Library money. And I was told by one of the school board members that in that Plainfield section, there's a thousand students of Avon Schools.
Which is 10%.
Yeah, which is 10% of their, and they're not getting, they're not getting that pass through then because they, they lose part of that, you know? And so because they have a TIP, so they lose part of it and other than their referendum.
I think just as important though, like I said earlier, there's three different governmental bodies. When you're in the unincorporated area, you're governed by the county. The county's comprehensive plan is not the same as our comprehensive plan. What we may want in our plan, we look at this future land development as being residential, let's say, commercial. And they may not look at it the same way. So they'll have somebody come there to get, uh, their, their project approved and some of them. And sometimes they'll communicate with us, sometimes they won't. And so that, that's another key component. You know, we'll have one plan commission, we'll have one BCA, we won't have the county, we won't have the town, and we won't have the other municipalities that have already encroached into Washington Township. And when you look at those, well, now you've got what, five different plan commissions and five different BCA's, so.
Yeah.
And we've got pockets, Lakeland Farm is surrounded by Avon, but Lakeland Farm is in the county. So.
Sun Chase is the county.
It's fully developed.
Yeah. And a lot of people don't know that Austin Lakes, right in the middle of, of Avon is county, that's a county subdivision. So it's hard to protect building standards, it's hard to um control the, the growth on the school. And, you know, we need more buses, we need more teachers, we need more uh school, more classrooms, um, things like that. And, and if, if the other taxing entities, the county, Plainfield, and some of the people encroaching into the Washington Township boundaries are making those decisions, then they're not necessarily in the best, um, in our best interest, I guess. So. Shane?
Um, anything else on the list?
Um, things that we haven't talked about yet, so why don't? So Greg, you were talking about the town center and things that we could kind of consolidate underneath that, so town center.
I'd just say Easton Gray, and then within that development are some of the things that we're talking about. You have your town center, your arts and culture, your entertainment for adults, and events and conference center.
And are we, we're just gonna, right, right. Uh, diversity and commercial opportunities?
We're working on that. Um, you know, we have Avon Landing and Harvest Landing.
Then you put another category, it says the town. I mean, and we, it says eliminate traffic, you're never gonna eliminate traffic.
No, you're not gonna eliminate traffic, that's why we have it.
Infrastructure, shared office space, incubator for new business, redevelopment, um, those are the things that the town's working on.
Okay, so as far as Easton Gray, is there any benefit to having a group? I, I know it's obviously a town project, right?
No, there definitely is, you know, input, you bet.
From all, you know, you have somebody from each taxing entity that's kind of with you guys, you know?
I'm not sure we're there yet, but I definitely think when, when that time comes, just to the particular, the civic component where I mentioned, that, that absolutely um this collaboration group will, will be a big part of that. I'm not sure, I think is the point you're trying to get to, I'm not sure we need a, we need this moment.
Right.
There is a time in the future that I think that definitely will be the case, but at this time, I don't think to your needs, I don't think we need to.
It's a little early.
It's a little early.
But we've identified a future need for this collaboration group.
Please.
Correct. Okay, um, we talked a little bit about adult education, is that something we feel at this time we want to dig into, to explore further?
It's a tough one.
Well, I think too, what you need, we need to drill down, what do they mean by that? What's the definition of adult education? What are they looking for? I mean, if it's like you lost your job at wherever you're at and now you kinda gotta retrofit yourself and retool yourself to do something totally different, is that what they're, is that what they're talking about? And then you can go to IB Tech, I mean, the town provides IB Tech funds for people within our community to do that. So.
See, that's something that I did not know.
Are you still doing that even though they're not here? Okay, good.
Okay.
As long as they're Avon students or they live in, in Avon.
So maybe this adult education is something that could just live on each of the taxing entity's websites, a resource for like information like that. I didn't know that existed, that's fantastic, this new information um from the library, the grant that they received. Is there a way that we could just pool all the information and here's a, here's a resource page of where to go to on each of the taxing entities, including the school? I'm sure they would be happy to put a page up.
I think so. I think that would be a good idea.
Do we think that that at this time addresses that question?
I don't think you're gonna see brick and mortar centers like we had come back. I think that's a thing of the past.
I agree.
And I'm saying the fact that everyone's moving toward online is one of the reasons that we lost both of those. So I just don't think that'll ever be something that we'll see again.
But if there's a resource page that it could just show people, here are the things that we offer here in Avon, here are the resources available. Right?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, um, so who, does someone want to kind of take that on? Just to find, I mean, this is, like you said, it has a very finite end, right? We pull all the information and then we send it to Karen and Jared and say, can you guys create a little website? And does somebody wanna kind of spearhead that?
We could put it on our, on our web service, but I'm not sure what it looks like, that's what I'm struggling with.
But I think somebody just needs to spearhead compiling the information.
I think that's probably us, Amanda, I, I think there, it may be us in the library, in the school.
Yeah, I think I went through the library in that process.
Yeah, we have, we're the ones contributing the resources to those programs. And so it's probably our volunteer Jared over there, he'll be super happy about it. Then we try to go with that education information out about what it truly is. Help partner with the school and then Laurel as well to get that information in the spot on our website and obviously share that information with you guys and ask you guys to put that there as well. It seems like an education opportunity that we need to take advantage of.
Right.
And then maybe we'll find like Greg said, those gaps, okay, well, that's creative nation, but what about this? And then maybe we'll find out what those gaps are.
Right. Well, I would also reach out to Brandy at Hendrix College Center, just to see what services they offer.
Well, I, I think that's going to be changing, hopefully expanding within, hopefully a, a couple of weeks, we can, we can announce some, some real, uh, working with, with made and trying to get that finalized. So uh, got some details to work out, but other than that, it should happen. And that should make those, that relationship uh much easier to talk about.
Okay, all right, so if I float up here, I can't reach this very well, I was on a chair earlier, town, is that fair? Ryan?
Yeah, I think so.
Can you volunteer for that?
Yep.
Okay, uh, the ever-present question since I've lived here, sports facilities.
Town.
Why town?
Because we're communicating with somebody right now.
Okay. Um, okay.
That's all I wanna say.
Uh, uh, all right, um.
Is there opportunity for the township to assist in that?
I, I mean, I don't, I don't actually want to discuss what's previously been discussed with other entities.
I think that comes under the schools kind of as well, I don't know. I mean, they have some facilities and maybe we could make use of some of those facilities, I don't.
So obviously, um, AJAA is the youth sports organization here in town. Um, their facilities are dilapidated, we all know that, we know that they need to grow. Um, they also have a partnership with the school corporation. So a lot of the facilities that the school has are kind of rented out, if you will, um, to AJAA at the present time. Um, so again, I don't, I don't know that we want anyone to come in and take over AJAA, that's, that's not what I'm saying here. Um, but what can be done to support the fact that there's really, I mean, yes, there are places for our kids to play. Um, but we don't really have what you would call a sports facility.
Does that fall under um a type of park?
Is it a sports park? That was why I was like, is it a collaborative thing? Is it something we discuss between town and Parks and Rec? I, I'm not sure of the answers to those questions. Brian, Don?
We can name it the town of Avon Sports Facility, and if you wanna fund it for us, Don.
Great idea. That would be great collaboration.
And sports facilities is, is a real challenge, as you know, I mean, that we've tried several times over the last five years to bring all the sports groups together and try to have a conversation and that seemed.
They don't wanna play on the same team.
Yeah, they don't wanna play on the same team. But certainly, you know, I've had several conversations with AJAA. Um, I've, I've had some conversations with Don, I had some conversations with you as well, that there's, there's probably some opportunities to collaborate there. I'm not sure where they'll go, just because it's such a challenging issue, but I think everyone recognizes the needs, I just don't know how we navigate.
Right.
Everyone's places that they wanna maintain.
Part of what you say, sports facility, you're kind of boiling the ocean too.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you mean recreational sports, do you mean youth sports? Do you mean, what do you mean? And is this for travel, is this a money-making endeavor, is this sports performance? Is this, we wanted for the school, there, it's a big, big thing. Um, and it has to be, I, this is me speaking, I think it has to be a decision by the community to do it. A grand park doesn't generate
No.
Revenue itself and its own, it's an investment to grow the other economic drivers. So, I mean, you know my thoughts on sports parks, I know. We absolutely, but it's just, it can drag a lot, a lot of resources. Pull a lot of resources down if not done properly. And then are you competing, should communities be competing, competing with each other? Does a Plainfield and an Avon and a Brownsburg all compete with each other? And in the end, they all fail and stuff still goes to a grand park. So I think you just, we just have to be very smart and deliberate and extremely strategic as to what comes in.
And Grant Park's more of a regional type thing. Savior from Mannheim with all the Boy Scouts, I mean, Ransburg Reservation is a, a council-owned camp that people from all over the country come to. And there's like, the Boy Scouts have identified those type of camps where you, you know, councils, councils will have smaller camps, but there's always, there's these key what we call regional camps. And there's central, you know, it's then throughout the country in certain states. And it's the same thing on this sports thing, because those type of things are, uh, look at Claremont, they started to do, you know, something similar and it's, you know, didn't even get very far off the ground and it folded up, so.
I think too, like Sean said, I mean, there, there's a, I, I, I believe it's reached a saturation point to be that because there, I just saw something, Lebanon just announced that they're gonna uh do something up there with Andy Carr and his group. And you've got Kokomo, you've got Noblesville, he even mentioned, there's two more announcements coming and then he believes they're at their saturation point. And, you know, they're really, I look at those as, as Grant Park is the wheel and these are just spokes for big tournaments. And once it starts boiling down to the quarterfinals, it all stays at Grand Park. So then the question is, what do we do with those facilities?
So I will say, because I live in this world, um, that's what I spend every weekend doing, I am, I am at these softball fields. Um, Grand Park is not like, he's, he's right, the national teams all play at Grand Park. Um, Grand Park has regional gymnastics championships, it's where the regional soccer championships and things go. I spend my weekends in Columbus, Shelleyville, um, some of these smaller parks. Cause there are so many teams out there that don't go to Grand Park, that is a very high-level facility. Now, where's Laura, Laura left her? Um, Laura and I went down to Columbus, um, and spoke with their Parks and Rec Director, who used to be the previous Parks Rec Director through the Washington Township. Uh, and again, this is where these, the B and C teams play, not the A teams. Um, and we asked for like, are you making money? And she laughed in our face, she's like, no, I'm making money, yes. Um, and she showed us her, her budgets and her financials and they're doing very well. It's in the concessions where they make a lot of their money. Um, and then they're hosting adult tournaments, they're, they're doing other things besides just hosting tournaments during the day. Um, but therein lies the question then, does it also become a place for where Little League plays? Cause you're not gonna make as much money doing that, that's just providing an amenity for your community. So back to Shane's point, this could go a million different ways.
I just look at that as something for our local community. You know, we're gonna, if we could add five more fields for baseball and three more fields for softball, it just complements what AJA has, what the school has, and maybe fill in that gap where we're not at a hundred percent, but would give us some flexibility. And also I look for a facility that we can have Rip Fest at, we can have a Fourth of July celebration at. Where there's parking, there's, you know, there's not just sporting fields, but you could have those type of family events there without having to go somewhere else.
Well, the other thing I believe we're missing is multi-use fields. Um, I know, like you said, you've talked to soccer, I, I've had a soccer um come to me recently because they were losing the church that they have played at for years and years and years. Um, I know Lacrosse is constantly looking for multi-use fields, so they come to the park asking if we have fields that they can use. Rugby is something that else that's getting popular. So as these sports game moments, it's not just baseball, softball, it's also the multi-use fields as well. So I don't even know where to begin to tackle this topic.
It's a tough one.
We could talk about it for hours and hours.
Maybe you put parentheses, multi-use fields, not just sports facilities.
Well, and sports facilities can also mean indoor.
Well, it could be indoor golf, it could be indoors, you know, whatever.
It could be indoor baseball, softball, which is also something they do, volleyball, I haven't even discussed that, so. Something we.
I think it's something that you can't be all things to all people.
Correct.
No, I think we have to pick one.
It's impossible.
Correct.
I could add a little insight, so I, I dug through every last comment um that was included and sort of categorized what I saw. Um, and youth sports was, it was the only sports mentioned. So let's, let's be blunt, they were referring to the AJA fields and our lack of, of quality uh youth sports facilities. So if we are to try to boil the ocean, let's start with boiling words, youth sports. Yeah, uh, this is a very large family community. Not everyone has children in this community, but a large population has children. This would be a eighty percent solution, if you will, target, targeting sports.
Yeah, I mean, and these kid, these are the kids who aren't on the travel teams. These are the kids that are staying home because they're not at that level, but they still wanna participate and they should still participate.
Yeah, there should be something for everyone.
I think a strong program drives that, I mean, as much as they get the other fields to do that, but a strong program does that. Um, you can't have one without the other, so, I mean, I think it's a chicken and egg kind of thing, but you kinda have to have both at the same time. You gotta, I mean, you look at, I hate to say Carmel and Carmel Dad's Club, but that is a huge, huge machine that drives a lot of really good programs. And if you have good programs that are growing, it's easier to justify having fields and that kind of stuff. So I think facilitating that kind of stuff, I don't know that that's something, I don't know, is that the business that either one of us are in to facilitate that kind of thing?
It's a lot to put under our Parks and Rec departments, I would think. Um, I think it would have to have some type of professional management or a, a, a separate entity managing it, I think.
We certainly can help and help facilitate those things, but I think having, yeah, somebody that that's there day in, day out.
But maybe, maybe some property, you know, if we did something together, I mean, from the standpoint like Greg was talking about, some, some extra fields and that type of thing where, cause that's their big hangup right now, is raising the money
Right.
to do that, you don't have the resources like we do.
I think I agree that, I don't, I don't think either of our, our governments are the entity to manage this in the future, but I think what we're doing here is the first step.
Right.
And so I think back to what we're trying to accomplish here, maybe this is a, a subcommittee with one from our parks, one from township parks, um, one, someone from AJA and someone from the schools to, to help build some alliance, some program to start talking about this conversation so we can take it off of our plates, but still have some movement going forward.
Something to think about too is that when we get to a point where they present you an opportunity, can we go in this together where we, we both fund it, not depend upon one organization to fund it or one travel soccer team to fund it, cause they can't. And, and to me, that would go a long way.
Absolutely.
Within our community.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. So we're thinking maybe this could be a subcommittee.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna put another one. All right, it sounds, and dedicated leadership.
For what, please?
Hmm?
What'd you say?
Dedicated leadership.
So I made a list of like four as we were talking, I think.
I think these three go together.
Yeah, so I think that, I think this is the start of kind of some of that where everything from transparency to collaboration. There's a lot of stuff that kind of ties all that together. I guess my thought is we commit to, is it me that's calling this to happen? My apologies, I apologize every time I speak, things go a little haywire.
Like the F. Pen.
Um, so I think if we, if we're committing to a regular cadence of. We're meeting in a collaborative fashion, whether it's quarterly, every four, six months, something like that. I think that's good to give updates on, hey, this is what the township's doing. I mean, I think we're talking, but I think having something where the public can come is important. To give updates and that we're, to show that we're also talking and working together, not. You guys are going this way, we're going that way and that kind of thing. I think that, that helps. I think asking for this feedback and then doing this survey again then next year, are we making progress in what we're seeing? Have we made an impact on that? Have we tried to? And then educate. Whether it be through marketing efforts or kind of that education is, these are the things we're working on. I think that'll help a lot. There's a lot going on that people don't know about. I mean, we probably don't even know what each other's doing.
I would add to that, that is that financial responsibility, I think that's.
AJA will transparent.
Sure, I agree.
And I think the fact that we're all starting to. Livestream and put things out on social media and things like that, that's. At least on the town side, that's our attempt to be as transparent as possible. Um, for those people that, you know, get off work and they have to fix dinner and they have to help the kids with homework and they can't attend our public meetings. That's a way for them to watch it after the kiddos are in bed or whether and still know what's going on in their community.
Having said that, I always like to say, I, I love people when they, they are listening online. If the more they can come to the local meetings, then we could have that feedback.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
It's, it's always better, you know, if we have people here that we can talk to and, and be with. Or we meet you at the farmer's markets or, you know, special events, because that's. That's important rather than we say it's all handled by social, you know.
Right. I mean, that's needed, but maybe that's part of it. Maybe it's a town hall kind of thing that's every so often and then maybe it's. Hey, at Ripfest, we're gonna have a joint booth where people could come up and ask questions or something, a bit bigger events like that.
Yeah.
Steve and I had. We were at Avon Heritage Festival.
That's right.
We didn't get a lot of questions.
Well, yeah, but I think that offer's out there, hey, we're gonna have folks from the town, the township willing to answer and ask questions. And then it's hard to argue, hey, we've had this many opportunities and, you know, without this.
I would like to also open that to the school and library though too.
Sure.
If we're gonna be one strong community, let's.
Right.
I think when we say we, that's we.
I just, I just think it's very important that those folks be, be included, so.
Absolutely.
Probably the four taxing entities, it's important that everyone is involved.
Okay, so I've lumped these together. I have a group and then this one as well, and then the third, I wanted to put Secure the Borders. Um, Excel's with diversity and commercial opportunities. And I think this kind of redevelopment opportunities. Infrastructure and new business, those all, those four go together, do we agree?
And the infrastructure, of course, we address as new development comes, um, all the time. And, um, I think that's part of our streets too, infrastructure, our streets, our bridges.
Well, I think too, diversity and commercial opportunities is we're not looking to put million square foot. Commercial buildings on every piece of land. Obviously, I want to have some, that makes sense to put it there because right across the street is where it is, but. As we move up to Avon Landing and, uh, other Mormon church property. Um, you know, we've got a fifty thousand square foot building, we've got two hundred and some thousand square foot building and. And we've put a limit on what we want and, but then within that, we're trying to get is, is tech, the thing to chase is, um.
Medical.
Office, medical, the thing to chase, you know, those are things we gotta look at. Will be out there beyond our time here, you know, so. Um, and so I think we are looking at diversity. We're looking at diversity from, from a housing perspective as well, trying to find town homes versus, and single family homes. So.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm putting town for all these, like.
How come we're getting them all?
Yeah.
We guys don't fuck with it.
That was not my intention of this meeting's turn whatsoever. But it doesn't mean that there can't be conversations among all of the leadership on what type of comprehensive plan maybe that we. You know, and we are looking at diversity for things like. Do you think it needs a subcommittee? That's my question. I mean, we have a lot of things that say town and I thought we were here to collaborate.
Well, yeah, but I think, I think that's somewhat addressed now, where like each entity has liaisons that go to. The, the town meeting, the township, I think that helps from, from a communication standpoint, although we had before. Um, so that people can know this is what's going on without tuning into the webcast or whatever.
Well, I think we have three, but then the fourth will be the town center. Right, when that.
That, that one we definitely.
Is that a point? And I think four subcommittees, we, we said between three to five, I think that's. As much as we should and could handle.
Okay.
Did, I mean, do we agree with that?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I had was around the adult education piece, but that's kind of like the youth sports that. We may not be the ones doing it, but we might help facilitate or something like that.
Well, but I think Jared was gonna work on just kind of compiling all of that and we're all part of that.
Yeah, I'm being more, we need resources and that kind of stuff for some reason. For whatever reason, something must have come and they need to, to the Avon community. What do we do as from a resource standpoint? It may not be bricks and mortar anymore, but I think facilitating, it just helps. But yeah, that's.
Um, I think one thing that we haven't talked about when we talked about traffic was, um. Excel's in transportation. We rated pretty low on that. I think we all know that. You know, we don't have any public edu-, um, public transportation here. Um, and that causes problems for qualified workers getting here to fill positions that we have and, you know, as we. Go into our economic development growth, we're gonna have more positions that need to be filled. And so I think that's something that would be a good breakout type thing to talk about, transportation.
Alternatives such as a bus service coming out to Avon, Danville, you know, I mean, just coming all the way out here.
Mm-hmm.
Get Indigo to make that. We, Shane and I remember back in our leadership class, we, we tried that.
Yep.
How many years ago? Over ten years ago?
Nine, yeah.
Well, I kind of viewed these subcommittees a little as the leadership.
Yes.
Oh, what do we call those breakouts?
Capstone.
Our capstone projects, yes, those are a little mini capstone projects.
Um.
I think in, in your transportation, I would probably put in there not only number four, but Henderson County Economic Development Partnership. I'd put John Taylor in there, our, our economic development guy, because those are the people that are bringing this new growth to us. And so even the Ronald Reagan corridor, maybe a bus line could just goes from thirty-sixth or West Washington along the corridor.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a couple miles further than it is today.
There's also Senior Center too that provides link.
Yes.
And I think that's something that the two of us can help probably fund, you know, more would probably help with that. And it's, it can be geared more for. People that can't drive, okay, where, you know, and, you know, they have jobs, but they, they just can't drive. I mean, that, I know there's a. I, I've had folks, you know, approach me about that and, you know, have an interest in that, so. They do provide that, but funding is obviously a big thing, so, um, cause they're limiting on how many. Fans they can have and, and drivers and everything else because of funds, so. And it's something that we, you know, as a group we could look at too.
Um, you know, Plainfield got with, uh, Indigo and they have their line, they pick up people at the airport. And then bring them out to their warehouses there, um. At Brad, what's it Bradford Road, I think is where they drop them off there by, um, you know, the Kohl's Outlet and the UPS and those things like that. So, you know, we have them that close, maybe we just need to get them further up here. To our retail district and along Ronald Reagan where our economic growth is.
Ryan, it's more tax based too, because the, the, I know when that was put through that the. The Guilford Township Board had to vote, you know, positively for it and it was a tax that they were levying on, you know. The areas and everything, so.
On the employers, I believe, wasn't it the businesses?
It's some version. Yeah, they created an economic development district and, and John and I have had some conversations about it, so. They create a district and it is those particular businesses within that area are basically assessed the tax rates. And then they're actually paying for, to cover the cost of those services, but. Yeah, it, it may, the township may have had to be a participatory party to that agreement.
They had the, the Guilford Township Board had to approve it, I know.
Um, you know, like we have Harlem Bakeries, Harlem Bakery is always coming to us and, you know, they can't. Staff all of their openings and, and they, they pay well. Um, so I know they struggle.
Just on the Costco sign, they cover up their sixteen dollars an hour, they're up to seventeen dollars.
Maybe nineteen might help.
I mean, that's how crazy it is.
Schools losing employees too.
Everybody's losing employees.
Here's a hand, my thoughts. I'm gonna put these four up here.
Okay.
These capstone projects, if you will. And if everybody comes up. What do you think we should get the vote for? Three piece? Just put like a little tallying? Okay, so vote for, and this includes everyone standing out there, vote for three of these. What do you think, when you think of Avon and this community, what do you think of? And then for those of us up here, or if any of you would like to be on a committee, have at it. Put your name under which committee you'd like to be on.
I think it should be the council and the board. Ryan, I'll end up probably working with all of them, so.
Are you gonna take all of them down? Are you trying to take over this meeting?
No.
Well, we've already identified there are people under, like AJA needs to be up here.
Right.
Um, we've identified several people under public transportation that we need to reach out to and ask if they would like to collaborate.
Right.
Okay, so where? Are you a school teacher before? Nope.
Well, man, and that's because I knew that you were gonna do this exercise, but I already have my three highlighted.
See? Perfect.
Friendly, safe and grown.
Okay, I'll get a pair of markers.
We should taint us.
We have your marker.
Yeah.
But you just pick a little spot.
I mean, I have to see him have the new one probably.
Don't be shy.
Ryan, do you want me to put yours down there?
Nope.
Are we gonna check marks? Yeah, I'm gonna turn them into tallies. Don't be mad at me, I'm turning them into tallies.
Which one I wanna be on?
Be shy. Come on, Karen.
Well, we have another, both of the people are gonna run for our office next month.
Yes, you've been down that road.
I just thought somebody was working on it.
I can't hear the ball.
It does, it looks like it, doesn't it?
Right.
It looks like it, doesn't it?
I swear to that.
It looks like what you're wearing today too.
Your outfit.
I didn't say double pink, I mean, I also do that.
All red heads, not the same, I go red.
That's great. Nobody's saying that.
Did you superimpose it?
We said that. A little, little sensitive.
Okay, who was about a ten, twenty minutes?
Steve only wants to sign.
You can't see him. We didn't have your license. I'm sorry. It's schools friendly, safe, growing, community diverse, parks, family, convenient, opportunity, affordable and accessible.
I will go, but I'm gonna go on behalf of the public, so I'm gonna put the three that they marked down as the most important.
Okay.
I feel like that's the most appropriate thing to do is make sure that they're.
So does he get a super vote?
Well, I use, that's what I use to rank those.
Yes, all of those are down there, but I wanna make sure that their top three have a, have a vote in this session.
You see Steve?
Wish the three are friendly, safe and growing.
You gonna put yours down?
I don't know about safe, I hear stories.
You like what happened to Robert's games?
His old garage.
Yeah, that's self-inflicted kid though. Does that count?
That's your Halloween costume, your, your Aquaman.
I believe I missed it a few.
He's the very top one yet.
Very top one.
I just want to see your reach.
Sean, you have to put safe.
I'm gonna see if he puts safe. Get the camera to zoom in on that one.
Will you put me under sports?
I know, I know, I don't recognize.
You want the chair?
Sean, what committee do you wanna chair?
While you're at it, Brett, just put me under number two. I forgot to do that part, sorry. While you're there, you know.
Just maybe feel better. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that she thinks.
Did you vote yet, Steve?
Yep.
Don's just taking a sweet time.
We're allowed to pick safety. I don't, Sean, you weren't allowed to pick safety either.
He picked it anyway.
He did?
Plus you wanna do.
Tell her what the other one is.
Left her a trick drink can.
Yes, as well. So.
Consider safe.
So, so did you?
Family.
So by just doing that, you're gonna blow yourself out of luck.
Karen, did you come up?
I know, I know.
So John? Not a boat?
You know, but, but here with me, no?
I want transportation.
No, I know, nobody wants transportation, I feel bad.
You know what, you're the best person to do this, but I.
We can put Steve, we can put all three Steves on, that's all.
Well, you know what?
Steve, Steve is Steve's show.
John, can we put you, not you, John, but John Taylor, can we put you under public transportation because of economic development?
Sure, put me in the public.
Yeah. I'm gonna put you under public transportation.
We're gonna put you in affordable.
I like, I like the free traffic.
There you go.
There, we're going on a four-year crazy.
Well, we're on.
Um, while I'm. We're creating people, Steve. Do you wanna be under, um, transportation?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, can I?
Good stage, we'll have a good time.
Does anybody wanna be on sports facilities?
Does anybody wanna be on sports facilities? Brett. Amanda, do you wanna be on her sports facilities?
She's already there.
I, I put myself in there. So Steve, Steve and I have switched. I switched from borders to facilities.
So I have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, he's coming to the meeting tomorrow.
She won't have to move.
Yeah.
Okay. Well.
You want me on sports facilities?
Do you want me to tally on the total? Right. I can do what I want, I'm solo. I can't reach.
Looks like school's safe and family win.
I like that.
I'm ready, Stephen.
Yep.
I am.
You don't have to use the invisible one.
He knows we don't have time up there.
Yeah, let's bruise on your back.
So I think, um, like Jared and Karen, school's safe, family, let's work together to come up with, not like a tagline, but you know what I mean? Like a Avon Washington Township, uh, safe, family-friendly, and we'll come up with something that we can all kinda use as part of the hashtag one strong community.
My question I would have is, why put more words into it? Unless it's gonna be something like a branding separation. So if we're gonna focus on school's safe and family, it almost feels like those should be three maybe educational items that we dive into deeper versus just those three words in addition to three other words. Just asking for clarification of what, what exactly everybody's wanting from that?
I was looking at it more of a, when you think about Avon, just kind of a marketing branding type thing. Kind of, we didn't go through the whole process, but getting down to like a brand essence, um, and a tagline, just kinda wanted it, what do people think of when they think of Avon? Right, if somebody had never been to Avon before, Washington Township, and they knew nothing about us, and they're thinking about moving somewhere in the Midwest, and we have that up there, what do they think? Hey, Mike, might check them out. So, something that we all kinda live by in this group, right? This is what we stand for, this is what's important to the public, and it's what's important to us as we go through these breakout sessions, keeping these things top of mind.
So I would just offer, so the township knows, the town, when we went through our branding, our branding is actually, Avon is a safe, vibrant community for active families and thriving businesses. Which covers about.
Pretty close.
Ninety-five percent of people have already, so.
Check.
Yeah.
Good, we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, that's what.
Just gotta put schools in someone.
You could say the greater Avon community.
I think that's great.
Instead of reinventing the wheel, but.
Absolutely.
Schools are important, though, to keep that in somehow in the tag.
Well, you 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 go back, and when you're an old, when you're an old codger like me, that's been around before a lot of development went on, that was the 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 center of everything was the schools.
Yeah.
And, uh, just because of all the growth, you know, it's not the, about the only thing going on in Avon anymore. But, uh, it's still extremely important, so, you know, it's.
You talk to most of the people that move out here, that's what they move out here for.
See, I would argue that's part of being a thriving family, right? For your family to be thriving, you demand schools.
Yeah, sure, tough on schools.
Maybe even if you find a way to do subcategories to what we're doing, that explain ourselves, and that becomes part of our branding, just.
And you want your family to be safe.
Yeah, exactly. If you think in schools, safe when they're around, so.
Well, I think we just need to figure out, you know, where these committees go from here. Obviously, I don't think this group needs to be once a month, I think that's too much. Um, so I think from here, we take the time to kinda get with our individual groups, um, and figure out what that looks like, and how we move forward with that, and then I don't know, does this group wanna meet three months? I think quarterly is plenty. Or, I think so too.
So maybe you get a volunteer out of each one of those groups that serve as the chairman, and they can set, you know, set up a meeting.
Well, um, the secure borders, we have a meeting tomorrow. You guys are already set. Yeah. So we switched, Amanda, you won't be on that, Steve, you'll be on that now, okay?
Yep, and I'm planning on being there tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Amanda, cause you live it every weekend, you can be our chair for sports facilities.
Thank you so much, Ray. He is very decisive. Okay, so the leadership collaborative community.
What was that, like that?
You wanna be our chairman?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine.
And I think Dawn and Ryan said you guys are gonna be on all of them?
We'll work with all of them, yes.
Okay, but just so, just include them on your communication.
Yeah, facilitators.
Yes, please.
To help and be there, participate, and help you guys work through issues.
Yeah, just let us know when your readings are. So, look, what you're making.
Great, great. Um, and then some on public transportation, we've got Steve Eisenbart, Steve Moore, and John Taylor, so who wants to lead that group?
I'd say Steve Moore, he does a great job.
I was gonna say I'm out.
I'd say Steve Eisenbart.
I'll do it, I'll do it, but I just like to throw it at someone else.
I noticed, I guess, a problem with that one, we don't have a representative from the township in that group.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a problem, we only have three board members.
So, I'm gonna be working with the group, so if you guys are okay with that.
Oh, Brett's raising her hand. Brett, you're raising your hand. Yes.
There we go.
Okay. Love it.
With enthusiasm.
Thank you, Brett, she was like.
Now Dawn, you're the chairman of our, uh, board committee, right?
Okay, sure, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
You like traffic? And then this group will get back together sometime into the first of the year, then.
Yeah, let's say January sometime. Um, we maybe need to stay away from Mondays, we didn't plan that very well, so that we can include the library and the schools. Okay? Um, council meets on Thursdays, so Mondays and Thursdays probably not a good day.
Township will be meeting the first Tuesday after the first Monday by law, by state statute, so that's the only one time that they have a weird reading date, but on that, so.
So then we're back to that Friday night that you didn't wanna do.
I don't wanna do a Friday night.
You're gonna, um, I know, the school board means.
I'm only, we're trying to figure this out right now, wouldn't it be advantageous, since we do wanna make sure that we have the library and the school involved? We make, I can send out a, maybe like a quick multi-date selection option, where, and I'll send it to everybody, to the schools, to the library, and let everybody choose from maybe ten different dates.
That'd be great.
In January.
And then whatever has the biggest number, and we just say, I'll send that out tomorrow, and we put a time cap of by this Thursday, that way I can send out the the date by Friday.
Okay, great.
But it works.
Thank you.
I just don't want them to feel.
Yeah, definitely, we need, I I don't know about you guys, but I real, I mean, I've got some feedback from them, and they really, you know, they would like to be involved, I, you know.
And they have that one day.
They absolutely should. Yeah, that works.
Especially since schools are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else that we wanna talk about before we wrap this up?
I have a question, you know, on anything, on any project, um, topic, do you, there's, there's a, like a project timeline to start to finish? What is our project timeline here? I don't wanna be rude, are we just showing up to show up, or what are we trying to, what's the end result, what's our objective?
I think we went into this with the idea to work together, um, us being two government entities, overseeing essentially the same area, um, to better collaborate, to better, maybe, maybe spend our tax dollars more efficiently. I I don't, I I think that's the end game, but there's not a finite end there, and I think that's where you're trying to get at.
I'm not sure, well, you look for metrics, yeah.
Maybe you wanna.
Well, we could keep doing this for the next two years, three years, four years, something like that.
Should we just maybe develop milestones?
Yeah, that's. So when does transportation become fun?
Well, I, I, yeah, I get, trust me, I get the metrics thing, and I get not mean just to mean to say you're doing it, but I think some of them are. When you look at the leadership collaboration kinda thing, I think that's sending the appropriate message to the community, I think the sports facilities, the, I mean, the securing the borders piece, I think that, that's an easy one, hey, if these things are annexed in there, that's, that's a pretty straightforward one, but the the sports facilities and the public transportation may not have something until something comes along, and they then work together.
Less congestion, we can measure it.
Right, yeah, in public transportation, you can give one bus route, two bus routes, and that may be feedback from the business community too. Hey, we now are able to get more employees because of whatever, and I think that's part of what each of those committees needs to define, what is the purpose? What are we gonna shoot for, what is our goal?
I think each committee is different, I think the timeline is different, um, some of them might be years, um, I I think leadership collaborative, that's kind of ongoing. And as long as this committee, I I know that this was beneficial to me this evening, I heard several things that I didn't know. Um, and I think Robert's right, we're we're all serving the same constituents that voted for us, and I think it's our duty just to work together and be collaborative, and if that means meeting once a quarter, I don't, I don't think that's too much to ask, I don't think so anyway. Um, if it becomes too much, we can meet twice a year. Um, we need to decide what that looks like, but definitely these four items are four very different items. Um, and then we're gonna throw the town center on, that's an enormous project, right? And that's years, that will take years.
Ryan's told me the annexation, annexation won't be done overnight, you know.
Oh, it's a long, drawn-out process, and the government, the way that the state law's set up really ties your hands. I mean, the the quickest you can annex something, if that's non-voluntary or non-constituent, can be used is.
It's not super voluntary.
Right, is about, the quickest would be nine months for one neighborhood.
More realistically, it's an eight-year and a half.
More, yeah, more realistically, it's eight months.
And that's still pretty quick.
Yeah. But I'm with you very much.
What we're looking at, Steve, just a small one section of it, yeah.
Yes, and if you don't all listen, I love checkmarks, and I love knowing that something is complete, and you've moved towards a goal. Um, but I don't know that this group is necessarily that one hundred percent. Well, we also talked at the first meeting remember about things that where we maybe duplicate, and how can we, um, make better use out of some of the tax dollars that are incoming? And, you know, you guys have that maintenance facility out there, and, you know, that you use, and and we talked about, we, um, outsource our police car maintenance and things like that, and so, um, Erin, you weren't here specifically, but, uh, we talked about, you know, they they might already have the personnel necessary without even hiring someone new that could do our oil changes and things like that, so, I mean, it's, it was purchased with tax dollars, and you know, it kinda makes sense to make best use of those tax dollars, so I think even just meeting and not necessarily just speaking about, you know, our breakout type. Absolutely. Uh, group things, it's good to just have conversation about efficiency within the government of all the lines.
Got a question back here, or comment?
I just had a couple of general comments, if I can.
Sure, please.
Just on what's been discussed. The, the first thing is kind of on the Eastern Gray project, which tomorrow night they're having the neighborhood meeting, the neighborhood information meeting on that. Just, but, uh, the other thing with that, on the ones I've been involved with in the past, having a government center as part of those adds adds a lot of credibility to those type developments. And I think currently, the the current town hall is probably better suited to be done some sort of event center, with its new overlooking the lake and things like that.
Yes.
And there, there's a lot of possibility in that property, even some of the front property, and do that there. The other thing is with the annexation, granted, I I know the important thing is to block the approachment from the other municipalities, but the advantage the other municipalities have is that they offer services that Avon does, if they offer water, sewer, other things like that. Creating just a wall creates more of the donut holes that's already a problem in Avon. You've got all these donut hole areas. The 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 thing that Avon can offer these people is value in their land, and the way to value that is to be able to rezone it. Much of the southwest area, they can't really do that in, in that annexation. And the land that Danville's annexing, the Brownsburg's annexing, they're doing all super voluntary annexations for development right now. And that's the value they're adding to that, plus being able to offer water, sewer, things like that.
Right, we're definitely at a disadvantage because of being an infant when it comes to the age of the town, um, and, you know, the infrastructure was already set up, and so we don't own any utilities, and that, that's how the warehouses that come up to the south side of one hundred South are, have all been annexed into Plainfield, because they're like, well, you want utilities, you need to annex. And so, you know, that's a lot of lost tax revenue because we don't have utilities, so, you know, maybe we need to work closer with, um, less central conservancy and things like that, you know, just to make sure they're on board and that they're there and willing to provide utilities when, when we need them.
The other common question I get from a lot of people deals with parks recreation, and they wanna know, they 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 wanna know why Washington Township continues to expand their parks recreation at a pretty quick pace, they they acquire the lands in the development, whereas the town, they they wonder why they just keep acquiring land, but they're not developing any other, um, four park sites they're sitting on now.
I would say that, um, part of that is we're, we're, um, investing in the infrastructure and our roads and things like that, and so it comes down to a budgetary, um, item.
Well, you you look to, I mean, to really, the township has four things that they're controlled of, you know, financial assistance, um, fire, parks, cemetery, cemeteries. So that's, you know, you kinda know what's, your box is made of, ours is made up of parks, and and police, and roads, and economic development, and we've gotta keep money going here, you know, we get grants, Ryan, and those people, please, they do a great job getting grant money. Like I've said forever, if it wasn't for Tiff and food and beverage, we probably wouldn't be Avon. So, but I think we too, we also need to look at, and people don't like it when I say this, but we need to leverage our resources, not leverage ourselves to put us in to financial difficulty, but leverage it where, and we've done a little bit, where we buy park land, and we give them a down payment, and then we stretch the balance out over three years, two years, five years, things like that, go in and find a bond that we know that maybe we could consolidate some existing debt and releverage it or rebound it, so we can use those extra dollars for other things, so.
Well, and I think, you know, maybe the public doesn't know, but for every, um, building permit, we get the park recreation impact fee, and so that can only be used to purchase new parkland, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's the truth. Um, it it, but that doesn't, we're not allowed to use that to.
Develop it.
Development.
Yeah.
We can only use it to purchase, and so then we're left with, okay, well, we have to buy some parkland because we have this in our coffers, and that's what it's for, but yet we've gotta figure out a way to raise funds, or or get funds, or put funds off to the side, and and to do that, we have to scale back on something else, and that's the situation that we get into.
But on a positive side, we have, we're having the, we're having that land earmarked now, where it's not being used for housing development. You know, it's being used for recreational, so that's a huge positive, you know, and that's.
And we're buying it now when it's cheaper because land prices just continue to go up, so at least we're, you know, we've got the land purchased, um, but it's gonna take us a while to be able to develop it, we'd love to see them all developed. I mean, I think if we, if we had a wish list, it would definitely be to develop them.
You'll come.
Okay. Any other thoughts and our feedback, folks?
Julie wants to watch the Saints game. Julie's a Saints fan, she kicks off at eight twenty, so she's.
Jared.
Julie wants to have a bond, a really big bond, yeah, with the bar.
Something I would encourage the four small capstone groups to do, maybe before we meet next time, is hold a, a public chat, because one of the themes that I heard while you were talking was clarification, these are very broad, what do they mean, what exactly are they talking about, and before you jump both feet into this pool of sports facilities or leadership collaboration or securing the borders or public transportation, might be advantageous just to reach out to the community and say, we really wanna know more in depth about this specifically, we would love for you to come to Town Hall or to the government side, wherever it might be, but just have that open dialogue, because that in itself might assist those four teams to figure out, okay, what is our mission statement? We think we know what our mission statement is, but again, hearing from the community, this is what we meant by filling out X, Y and Z, it's really gonna give you a clear-cut answer, and that's gonna give you a better idea of the, the focus and the target that you have to do, so not a you have to do it, just a, an encouragement of something you might be able to do with the community.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, have you received any feedback during this meeting, maybe you've been monitoring, is there anything, uh, worth sharing?
No.
Is there anything you're gonna tell us in private?
There's this conversation going, and the entire conversation is public, um, but it's, it's nothing major, a few comments, a few statements, just about, there was a question about mom and pop brick, uh, in one of those shops, how might the commercial space be regulated in a way that large chains won't root, so that's a, a question that came through, um, comment about wanting to become more integral into the town, but can't because they're outside of the town.
Yeah.
Um, another comment talking about, uh, it's a greater community to embrace ourselves more around youth sports, so, and going back to the sports, and, and/or activities for our children, not only has COVID disconnected them more, but our kids just don't have any pulse of fun, safe balance, sports is a wonderful option, uh, consider the library board to be included, which I think that, that's our argument, but that's about it, everybody else, a few comments, just thanking you, thanks for sharing, thank you for being here.
Great.
Thanks, Jared.
Well, with that said, I guess we'll come up with a, when you put out the doodle survey to figure out when we're gonna meet in January, but, uh, I'll let you adjourn since it's on your turf.
Well, thanks, everybody, for the time tonight, and we will adjourn.
Great.